Good evening, everybody. My name is Caitlin Gleason and I am president of the Mount Vernon City Council. Welcome to the January 24th, 2024 meeting, public meeting of city council. To start, could everybody make sure that their phones are silenced during the meeting? Also like to let you know that there's an exit to the rear of the room to your right, exit to the front of the room to your right. There are stairs in, uh, once you go out both exits, there are stairs to the right. There are also stairs straight down the hallway. Men's room is right by the stairs of the hallway, the main stairs, and ladies' room is right outside these doors. First, we'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Javon Boxill. Okay, with that being said, we are going to start off with our public speakers. First public speaker is Peter Sacalas, Peter Sacalas. Sacalas, Sacalas, Chalice, Chalice, Peter Chalice. Okay, he is not online and he is not in the room. Number two, Mrs. Ms. Wilma Frank, please come to the podium.
Good evening. Wilma Frank, living in Mount Vernon. You know my address, right? I'm here to call to your all attention about the traffic on Columbus Avenue. I live on Columbus Avenue on Grandview, and the traffic there is very, very bad. The cars are coming down like the highway. And the reason why I'm bringing it to your attention is because I do not want to see another child killed in this area. There is a school two blocks from my house, and it's like nobody cares because they do not have the sign for them to see there is a school. You know, so people just ignore it and just fly down the street. If I have to cross the streets, I have to run because there is no crossing signs. So I am requesting that you put a crossing sign at the corner of, of, um, Grandview and Columbus Avenue, right by the Seventh Days Adventist Church. We need a cross crossing sign there. The only time a crossing sign was there is when Wallace was mayor. He put a sign there and after that it washed out and nobody replaced it. And we cannot, we cannot cross the street. Secondly, I want to talk about the taxes. When are you gonna stop balancing the budget on your constituents back, especially homeowners? I know I just talked to the controller and he was trying to explain to me about salaries and this and that. But you all cannot continue to balance the budget on our backs. We are senior citizens, most senior citizens in Mount Vernon own houses. We're not working anymore. We cannot afford it and you're killing us. I know ten senior citizens who sold their houses, they move away, they couldn't enjoy their own house because they can't afford the taxes. Shame on you all. The next thing I want to talk about is, is, um... Oh, I was listening to you all, um, last week on Zoom with the controller, the mayor, and the city council president. And then you all say, but you all getting record money coming in into Mount Vernon. You mentioned eight millions, you mentioned a hundred and fifty millions. It's good. But why is it, why is it that the people who giving you all the money, how is it they're not helping with the taxes? Is it because they want to drive us out of here and they want to come back? Is it, is it, and you all, and you all helping them? Huh? Is it because of that? Because I believe if you could throw up money in more, in a place where the taxes keep on going up and up and up and nobody is saying anything, I believe something is wrong about that. Okay? Every day, every day, as God made the day, people calling me, "Ms. Frank, you're selling your house?" You know I ain't supposed to cuss, what I cuss? Because I work hard for my house and I don't want nobody calling me, "If you listen, listen, this is Ms. Frank, do not call me and ask me for selling my house because my house supposed to be a generational wealth." Thank you. Okay? My hustle, when I die, my, my children supposed to get it. We have enough red lines on, on, on us already. We have enough. We don't need no more red lines. Okay? Right now, people can even pay rent. So if I sell my house, where my children is gonna live? They, they can rent, so you think they will be able to buy, buy a building? And that's what they want, people. You can't blame no other race but us. Can't blame nobody. You all cannot get, you all cannot, how you always say, get along to, to move along, something like that? You all gotta stop that. You all gotta say, no, we have nobody fighting for us. The only person that used to fight for us was Maureen Walker. Then that's why she was a controller for 24 years and I supported her every year. Can I say that about you all?
Mrs. Frank, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for listening. Fix it!
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Okay, next is Ms. Sparks, Asia or Aisha? Thank you, welcome.
My name is Aisha Sparks. Thank you for having me today. I am here to present a speech in support of added signage, Melvin Sparks Way to Oneida Avenue Street name. A little bit about Melvin Sparks. He was born March 22nd, 1946 in Houston, Texas. As an aspiring guitarist, he moved to New York at the age of 10. Melvin met his wife, my mother, Judy Bates, in a recording studio in New York City and married in 1971. They had five children, Akila, myself, my twin sister, Idrissa, Elizabeth, and Melvin Jr. In 1981, the Sparks family settled in the wonderful city of Mount Vernon, remained here for approximately 34 years by way of Harlem, the Bronx, Yonkers, and even a short stint in Greenberg, where I now live. Melvin was a family man, a devout Muslim, community activist, and a great musician. He has accomplished doing around 13 albums. One of his albums, he named after his oldest, Akila. He named an album or a song from, um, in honor of his wife called Judy's Groove and also one of his granddaughters called Mykeah's Groove. He is credited for creating what is currently known as acid jazz. He inspired, jammed with, and mentored countless musicians such as Sam Cooke, Miles Davis, Dizzy Gillespie, George Benson, Lou Donaldson, and others. He was a world-renowned entertainer and friend. He traveled the world and visited multiple countries. Melvin was a board member of the Sharia, the Islamic lawmaking board at the Jihad Dawah Muslim Center. And now I would like to just present some of his activists for the community and things that he participated in. Mount Vernon Mayor Clinton Young Jr. praised Melvin for his many years of service to the community while offering his condolences to the family. Iman Shaheed said, "I was impressed by his ability to preserve the African-American culture in his music, from Africa to hip-hop." That was in the New York Amsterdam News, March, um, 2011, the year he passed away. He was the recipient of the 2006 Arts Award for Musical Artists by the Westchester Arts Council in White Plains, New York for his contribution to art and culture. He served in the ministry of W.E. Muhammad for over 40 years. He mentored students at Claremont Prep School, the basics of how to play a guitar. He offered computer classes to Mount Vernon residents, including neighbors, the elderly, and the great, the greater Westchester County, New York communities. He pu- he performed during annual jazz festivals throughout the tri-state area, volunteered many hours during the week in support of learning technology, music, and becoming a Muslim. He contributed to the Jazz Foundation of America, participating in programs throughout the tri-state area, provided support for anyone who wanted to learn more about new electronics technologies from radios, television, CDs, DVD recordings, et cetera. He cooked and prepared turkeys to serve and feed the homeless during the holidays on a regular basis, participated in the coordination with the mosque to hold street festivals for the community annually, where his band also contributed their time and played sets. He participated in the Summer Concert Series presented by City Hall Recreation Department, right here on these very steps. Melvin offered the family home, his family home, my family home, both to family members and friends through periods of difficult times and financial struggles. He led a life that many strive to attain. He lived a happy life, enjoyed cooking, creating music, and bringing a smile to everyone, to everyone's face. Melvin Sparks, I can't see now because of my tears. Melvin Sparks, with his many achievements and awards under his belt. His family and community was his greatest achievement of all. So with that said, um, I would like for the council to accept this petition of over 300 people who signed in support of this, um, street name addition, not change, but addition of Melvin Sparks Way to Oneida Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks.
And really quick, I wanted to show, just to have a visual so you can see who he is. This is one of his albums, Melvin Sparks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And one thing I forgot to say at the very beginning is that council will make comments at the end of all this public speaking, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Ms. Sarah Thompson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sarah Thompson. I'm here to represent several investors and contractors in Mount Vernon. Specifically, I want to bring to your attention just the permit processing that the building department is currently handling for us. I know that last year, the mayor had made mention to get support from the state. I don't think that that support has been initiated considering we have an outstanding permit that was filed in May 2022. That permit was approved in December. We did face a stop work order, um, in February, which was immediately corrected. Communication from the building department has been very minimal. We didn't hear back from them till June, when that post amendment was, um, approved. Once we received that post amendment permit approved, we didn't hear back from them till November, when we received, um, support from a community member to, has, that has a relationship with the deputy commissioner from the building department. Several email communications, we met with the commissioner of the building department on December 4th. After 30 days passed, um, he finally did respond. We requested a change in a building inspector because we had the same initial building inspector, which he stated that we had made a previous request, so he denied the request. We made that request because that building inspector threatened to make it difficult for us to proceed with the project. Now we're going on two years, and when he finally did respond 30 days after my email to him, it was at 4:00 PM, and he went on vacation for two more weeks. On January 11th, um, we did hear from the deputy commissioner, which then requested that we again file another post amendment permit, which we did, and we have not received any communication from them whatsoever. This is going two years on an investment property. Um, you know, looking at your downtown vision report, we would love to be a part of that. But I, I think that if the building department, um, issues are not addressed in regards to their communication, their processing, and I guess an increase in inspectors, I can't imagine that that vision is gonna come to light anytime soon because it is very frustrating, um, very costly. We've paid over $8,000 in permit fees and have not been able to get anything accomplished. So we've been on standstill for two years since May 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. And we have Marlene Wertheim next.
Good evening. Anybody gonna say good evening?
Good evening.
Thank you. Recently, my attention was drawn to a Patch article which stated that Mount Vernon, in partnership with the Enforcement Division of the New York State Office of Cannabis Management, was cracking down on illegal cannabis shops. And our mayor proudly claimed that this shows that Mount Vernon is upholding the integrity of our community and ensuring safety and compliance of the cannabis industry. Let's go back to two weeks ago, a city council public hearing on Elevate, a cannabis dispensary which was able to open prematurely without the necessary approvals or legislation. In response to public concern, you, the city council, have repeatedly assured us that the enterprise was shut down and being monitored while completing the required processes and you, the legislation needed. Dubious citizens did their own investigation and in contradiction, observed a fully operational facility selling in the shop online and promoting adult entertainment. It seems to me that you either were not keeping tabs on the situation or that you knowingly misrepresented the truth. Neither instance reflects well on you or inspires confidence that our city will establish a sound guide for this and future dispensaries here. Three more in the pipeline, I'm told, with one just ready to go. And tonight, you're to vote on the needed piece of legislation, which, as it states, was prepared with city council and its staff. Where is there any mention of community input in such a notable issue that impacts our citizens? The public hearing was after the fact, when tonight's draft was already done and not easily accessible for review. Was there any discussion with other principalities who have such legislation in place? Really, shouldn't this category of retail have been a part of the considerations in the comprehensive plan? I quote, "One of our city's statesmen with years of experience and observation," quote, "If it's not coming from the community, it's not real." "Your citizens are asking to be a relevant part of how things are being done, not just to serve as watchdogs. Cannabis is an issue, but not the message. We're pressing this matter because it stands as another example of how Mount Vernon often operates, misrepresents, doesn't enforce, and excludes. I always take pleasure when reviewing newspaper public announcements, the White Plains reference to their governing body as the common council. City Council, that name, appears to be cold, detached, with a, a gap between itself and those they serve. Maybe White Plains politics aren't fully admirable, but the name does at least represent a positive aspiration. Cannabis and development with the comprehensive plan are bringing us to a new place in our evolution. This is a city with long, rich history. I ask, what are we now contributing to that history? Will future residents be able to look back to a time marked by change, to thoughtful, forward-looking accomplishments and citizenry as active participants?"
Thank you, Ms. Wertheim. Next, we have Lawrence Gomez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Gomez?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening, esteemed members of the city council. I am a lifelong Mount Vernon resident, 56 years, and I come before you today deeply concerned. I come before you as a former law enforcement-
Mr. Gomez, can you hold on just a second? We gotta check the, uh, the volume. Go ahead, Mr. Gomez.
Okay, can you hear me now? Hello?
Can you speak directly into the microphone, Mr. Gomez? We're having a little bit of a, uh, volume issue here.
Okay, are you able to hear me now? Okay, I come before you as a former law enforcement officer credited with almost 28 years of exemplary service to my community. I know and understand the criminal element that plagues our city. My concern is the letter and a special request to have speed cameras installed in the city of Mount Vernon. I believe in this case, the decision to be a knee-jerk reaction, a well-intended reaction to a far more systemic problem. I don't know the figures, but I contend that much of the speeding caught by police is surprisingly low. PD simply does not have the assets with essentially some 12 uniform patrol officers on the street answering 911 calls at any given point in time. This, I contend, is a money grab for additional fundage to be split with a vendor who will assign, be assigned a sworn officer to verify the infractions, sign off the ticket, and mail said ticket to the registered owner with no recourse, a way to challenge the findings. This is not American. We have the right to stand before our accuser in a court of law. And I want to be clear, these vendors keep track of every single violation they find and insist that they are compensated for it since they are responsible for the maintenance of the cameras. The city, in effect, will become indentured to a business entity, not the law. In addition, this brings along integrity issues for the police and indeed everyone involved in the process. Police cannot violate the VTL without activating turret lights and siren without sufficient reason. So how would a police car bypass the lights and disregard local posted speeds when the need for being quiet and not alerting an evil door would be necessary? What would be the public process of expunging their summons be? I certainly would want full disclosure on every summons issued. How would emergency service units such as pro- public and private ambulances services be affected? Just because there's a patient in the rear does not give the driver a cart launch to disregard the VTL. What if an esteemed elected official or civil service employee who received the summons in the mail, having no recourse to fight, did summons do? That an ordinary citizen could not do. Remember, it's equal application of the law to all. Cameras and being indentured to a business entity looking to make a profit removes the concept of a violation level speed infraction, a violation in the vehicle and traffic law, whereas an officer has overall discretion on whether or not to issue a summons. Excuse me. We cannot negate the human involvement in this decision-making process, and we should not. I further contend that a vast majority of offenders in this city are operating vehicles with fraudulent license plates, fake plates, no plates, paper plates, you know, as far away as Arizona. This is clearly an attempt to circumvent the system, leaving only the responsible citizens who live in this city with the responsibility of filling the city's coffers, while never addressing the ones truly responsible for the dilemma. There are other considerations in addressing. The gangs and motorcycles of every manner, many not rated for street use, the mopeds, powered skateboards, and the like that are using our streets illegally that would be completely unaffected by speed cameras or license plate readers. Those issues should be addressed. A speed camera taxing the responsible city members of our city is just not good business for the city of Mount Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Up next is Nadia Edwards. Welcome.
Hello. Hi, I'm Nadia Edwards. Um, I am a sophomore at Denzel Washington School of the Arts, and I am a part of Safe Place for Our Girls. Safe Place for Our Girls is basically a safe place for women, well, young women growing to become women, to be, to become themselves and be free, just enjoy the new beginnings and the things that Safe Place brings for you. Me being in Safe Place, I have gained a sisterhood with a lot of young girls, people older than me as well as younger than me. Ms. Nikia Highland, she has taught and done many things for me during those time that I've, the little bit of time that I've been there, and it is very inspiring to see her work. What Ms. Nikia done, has done for me is basically in, say, around August during the summer, I had a bad grade and had brought me to be in summer school. So with summer school, I had sat, did there, I have been there for like at least a month. And with that, I had a trouble with one of my credits. And I brought it to Ms. Nikia's attention and she snapped in a finger and the situation was fixed. And now I have gained my credit. So with that, she has brought me to see that in many ways, it can be done with people that you know. And now that she's not in the district anymore, she is still a part of a community and has that outreach to different people that you, she can call and they'll answer immediately because of what she brings. So with Safe Place for Our Girls, I have actually gained a sister. Royalty is one of the people that I call many days of the week. And I am now watching her go on to college, and that is also something Ms. Nikia helped with. Ms. Nikia brought to her attention, well, she brought to Ms. Nikia's attention that she really wanted to be in school again and has, she is now a freshman at Westchester Community College. And with that, she has, um, just started at least a week ago. Ms. Nikia has done so many things for me and other girls, and I've watched it happen in instant for not even two months that I have been in the program. I've watched a lot of things happen and I'm very welcome to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Nadia. That's great to hear. Tajine Highland?
Well, my nice name is not Highland. I'm, hold on. My name is Tajine Ternier Ortag. Um, do I have to give my address? Five North, okay. So, hold on, I'm a little- I'm a little choked up. That's our little baby. So I am, um, most of you guys know me, but I'm a licensed master social worker, but I'm also part-time staff social worker at Safe Place for Our Girls. And I thought I was just going to just be here to, you know, a little prop and assist. But just like, you know, I'm just so happy to hear Nadia articulate her experience so far. We officially launched the program November 13th, but we had long nights way before then, just kind of like figuring out how to build the program and support one another. So I'm very happy to hear, um, her experience so far and the sisterhood and the bonds that she has created and just her seeing the value in having a safe place, um, pun intended. And me as a social worker, I, I use my life experiences, just meeting the girls where they are. And it's just, it's just great. And tomorrow, we're having a vision board party, slash karaoke, where we're just encouraging them with community, their parent, their, we invited their parents or guardians, and you all can come over and just see the work that we're doing with the young ladies and how their confidence and self-esteem is just growing through the roof in just two months. Yeah, so that's much, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I think we got some of the names wrong on the speaker list, right? So Nikia, are you coming up to speak or is there another Nikia turn, turn? I know who Nikia Highland did. I don't know, uh, yeah, okay. Turk, note that, please.
Good evening, great city of Mount Vernon. Um, I don't even know how to- Um, I don't even know how to follow any of that and, um, my mission this evening was just to share light on who we are at Safe Place for Our Girls. In March of twenty twenty-three, our amazing executive director, who is here with us this evening, Deputy Burrell, um, was granted nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars from Congressman Jamal Bowman. This evening, um, I just left with a group of my girls from his campaign kickoff. My reason being is not to promote to my young ladies who a vote should be for, but understanding that there are places when we are supported in a positive outreach, the rooms that we can walk into. Our young ladies in Mount Vernon deserve to know that amongst this council were yet young Mount Vernon boys and girls that serve as leadership in this great city. So they too should be amongst these rooms. So being appointed the director of Safe Place for Our Girls, it is beyond an honor and a privilege of my own. Coming from Mount Vernon City School District as an educator for over twenty years, um, it was unnerving for me because I was used to a way and, and a structure. But I, I lead with a God spirit and a God conscience. And I knew that if this was presented to me, this was something that was needed to be done. So again, as you heard from my social worker and Nadia herself, long days, long nights, all throughout the summer before we were a unit, that we continue to mix the concrete of the foundation that we knew we wanted to lay for these young ladies. As I said to you, being an educator here in the city, I personally understand the magnitude and necessity in creating a space where a young lady can develop a healthy lifestyle and understand that sometimes the popular decision is not the cool one, but it's the right one. And it's, we're only young for a short time, but who we, what we do and who we become in that short time will then in turn help us to become whatever it is that makes our heart beat a little bit faster. So great council, I tell you, thank you all for all of your love and support that has been shown to us. Sometimes just from when I enter the building, your warm hellos and pats on the back. It's necessary for my early mornings and my late nights as I maneuver, trying to figure this new thing out. But when I hear my young ladies come in from today, Nelson Mandela, they had iReady testing and how their teachers shared, I went up a hundred and twenty points, Ms. Highland. I got a four on my science project that we did together. These are the things that are necessary for my young ladies to sit in a classroom and not feel inferior because of maybe a learning disability or another diagnoses that sometimes tell us that we're not good enough. They are already equipped. And if we continue to nurture them in a way of becoming, we will see our next Madam President. We will see our next board president. This is what we must do together. So I ask you for your continued support and prayers because it is appreciated, it is necessary. And from the girls, myself, I thank you for allowing us to be here in this great city, piloting out this program, and I pray that it's for times to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikia. Nikia, can you just come back up to the podium? Can you please tell, since we're on Zoom and we do have, um, a lot of residents here in the room, can you please tell the public how they can get in touch? And how, um, any of our young ladies, the age group, um, how they get in touch and how they get involved in your program?
Absolutely. So the name of the program again is Safe Place for Our Girls. We are located at one oh five Stevens Avenue in Suite four oh five on the fourth floor. We are open daily from eight AM to six PM. And I say that to say, yes, we service our girls from three PM to six PM. But if there is anything where we can be of support and assistance prior to school closing, I encourage my families to please stop in, call, email. My number is nine one four, five one three, two eight four five. Again, my number, nine one four, five one three, two eight four five. I can also be reached by email. It's in Highland, H-I-L-A-N-D at C-M-V-N-Y dot com. Again, email is in Highland, H-I-L-A-N-D at C-M-V-N-Y dot com. And again, however, I can be of support and light to you, to your families with open heart and honored, I promise to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is Peter online or in the room? Okay, that is the end of our public speaking. I will give it to, um, council members to begin. Councilman Thompson? What are your comments?
Hi, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, and Happy New Years for tho- Happy New Year for those we're seeing for the first time in January. Uh, there, there's so many things, uh, going on in our community, so many things, uh, that we can consider wrong. But there are so many things that are going right in our community. And I, I'm, I'm hopeful that we, we focus more on that and bringing forth um, the great things that are going in our city. Um, with that being said, I want to, um, we'll, we'll address, uh, the traffic issue on Columbus Avenue. We need to, uh, look at that. Um, I drive the city every day. I have not, um, observed that. But I'll make sure that I pass by there more often to see what's going on over there. Um, the adding to a street name, I, I loved your message. Uh, you know, but, um, adding a street name can be a little difficult because, you know, there's so many ties in with that, but I believe Oneida Avenue is a dead-end block. That's, that's what you're talking about, right? And, uh, we have been, um, asking residents who would like to, um, memorialize, if you will, their loved ones to try and get a, a plaque of some sort that, that can be placed, um, in the area. And, um, but we'll have to speak more as a council to, to see what we can do with that be, uh, because lately, we haven't been adding names, uh, to streets, so we'll have to, um, go into more depth conversation with that. But, um, your message was absolutely beautiful. And I'm gonna have to look up that because I haven't, I'm, I don't believe I heard any of that music. So I have to, um, look that up. Thank you so much for presenting that. Uh, in regards to building permit processing, I know that a lot of it has, um, been delayed over time. Um, it has gotten a lot better, but there's still work to be done. Uh, so we'll, uh, our legislative aide is not here tonight, but I'll make sure that I get the information over to our, our deputy commissioner Heidi and, um, get some feedback on what's going on because two years is a long time um, for any permit. So, uh, I'll look into that personally for you as well. Uh, in regards to, uh, our cannabis, um, I'm not sure, uh, what transpired since our last meeting, but I will drive, like I said, I drive the city every single day. So I'll make sure I pass through there to see what's going on. Uh, but we do trust our, uh, law enforcement to do their part and, and, uh, we are thankful for our residents to also hold everyone accountable. So thank you for presenting that. And I'll pass by there on my route just to see what's going on and give a little knock at the door to see, um, what's happened as well. So thank you for presenting that. Uh, Safe Place for Our Girls, I'm just ecstatic that we have more things for our children to do because so many people say that we don't have anything um, in our city for our young people to do. And on the contrary, our youth borough has a plethora of things going on in our community as well as our recreation department. So there's so many things going on. But we have to make sure that we have our young people show up. And when you show up, we get more funding for our young people, right? Um, I remember as a child born, raised, and educated right here in Mount Vernon. Um, as a child, I didn't have a choice. Uh, my mother brought us uh, to these programs and we wound up liking these programs when we got there. But we have to as adults and, and family, whoever, whoever the guardian is in the house, make sure that you partner with these children and these families and get them to these programs because these programs are awesome. Uh, they have busing, they had, they go on several trips. Uh, they're doing amazing work through the youth borough and recreation department. And I applaud you all for that because and, and you know, and that's just one, that's just one sector. The Safe Place for Our Girls is new. But there's also a whole lot going on for our gentlemen, but we have to show up in numbers. And when, when she spoke about nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, um, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars that we got, one dollar short of a million. But, um, you know, uh, those grants come in, these come in when, when you see people like Director Burrell advocating um, for the things that the city needs, right? So she, she conk? Yes, she, she constantly, um, Director Burrell, if you could stand up so they could see who you are. You know, she advocates daily to make sure that we have funds coming in. And when, when, when people say, well, you know, they don't like, uh, uh, elected or appointed officials going outside the city, it's, it's a necessity in order to get the funds that you need to come into the city. So I am so thankful for you in the position that you're in and constantly advocating for our children because the youth borough has been here for decades and I know it's the plans to stay here. But we have to make sure that our children show up to these programs. They're inside of our schools and they're inside of different offices and throughout the city. Make sure we show up because I hope, um, I partner with our Director Burrell and I hope is to have our own youth borough building. You know, uh, where where we don't have to depend on the school system because you can go, but, um, you can only go so far in the school system because you have to close at a certain but if we have a building dedicated to our, um, youth borough and recreation, that it would just blossom this city. So I, I believe that we're on the right track. We have been in talks with different elected officials in and throughout the county and state. So we have been begging for money on behalf of the city of Mount Vernon. So I, I applaud the entire team of the youth borough and recreation department. Continue the great work you're doing and our city is on the right track. It's never a fast fix when you talk about government. Um, because it doesn't happen overnight because you have to dot every I and cross every T. But I assure you, we are on the right path to making Mount Vernon the best city that we already know it is. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Thompson. Councilwoman Brown?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Um, it was a lot tonight. Um, I'll start with the good. Um, Nadia Edwards, um, I want to commend you. Right, I can remember being in a sophomore, a sophomore high school and I would never get up and speak in front of people without notes, without, you know, any kind of preparation. So I commend you. It's amazing what you're doing. I don't know what the curriculum looks like in a, in the school system these days, but I wish I got it, right? Because I, I'm nervous. Um, and it's also phenomenal to hear the mentors, the role models that you've acquired through the program. I think it's very important, um, being someone who grew up in Mount Vernon, who came through the system. It's some of the same people, same guidance counselors that I connected with in high school that I am so close with today, who've kind of helped shape my life. When I was going in the wrong direction, they were able to steer me right. So I'm happy to hear that you gained not only friendships, but mentors and people you trust to assist you in difficult times, right? And as a, as you age, sometimes you're embarrassed to go for help, but you already see that going for help isn't a problem. Asking for help, being a black woman, right? Sometimes you try to be a superwoman and you have to realize that you need your support system. And it seems like you've accomplished that. So I commend you for the, for you being a part of the program, for you, uh, coming and being willing to speak to the council about why it's beneficial. Um, so congratulations. Um, to Taj and, or are we going by the whole name today? To Taj and Nikia. Um, the passion that you all have, right? Taj was giddy just talking about all of the things, right? Nikia, the passion that you have to get up and speak about why it's important. It, it, it's absolutely not necessary for you to come to council. Council didn't give you the funding. It came from the federal government. But to see that you're passionate about it, to see that your, uh, executive director came out, it's a late night to be here at seven PM to support you. I love, uh, what you all are doing for the youth. And I, I appreciate the presentations because it gives the public an opportunity to see the things that are going on as opposed to just some of the not-so-good things that are happening in Mount Vernon. So thank you for that. Please stay committed. Please continue to help our girls. I'm one of the girls in my head. So, um, thank you. All right, um, let's get into some of the other things. As great as this, uh, Safe Girl, Safe, um, Safe for, Safe Place for Our Girls program. All right, I got it. Ms. Frank, welcome back. We have not seen you in a little while. Um, I, I'm sorry to hear that, but I'm glad you're feeling a little bit better. All right, Ms. Frank, I don't want to get in trouble because you're talking back, so I, I'm gonna keep going. But, um, there's a few things that you said. And I, I want to, I want to address them. Um, first and foremost, you talked about Grandview and Columbus, and you talked about another kid being killed. And that kid that was killed on Columbus was actually a friend of mine, right? A friend, their family is a friend of mine. Um, and it was before we got on council. But I agree with you, right? And I think it's interesting to hear you come and speak about speeding and the mechanisms we need to put in place to prevent it. And then we had Mr. Gomez speaking about speed cameras, which is something that the city is considering, right? Um, I think it's important to note that people in the city have different perspectives on different things. I think speeding is an issue. We get complaints about speeding at least weekly. I want to say two to three times a week, right? There's been, there have been animals killed, there have been children killed. There, there was someone, a, a child hit by a car the other day. Speeding is a legitimate issue. Everyone wants speed bumps. Speed bumps aren't the best recourse, right? Which is why the city is considering speed cameras. Um, and I'm gonna get into some of Mr. Gomez's comments while I'm addressing yours. But some of the things you mentioned, Mr. Gomez, are, aren't actually true, right? Um, with regard to how it's regulated, how it's feeding into businesses. And New York City actually went through the same study. Um, they started out having speed cameras in only a particular amount of districts, right? And what they did is they, they've tied it to school districts. Um, so they started out, let's say with about twenty, twenty-five cameras. They increased it to seventy-five cameras. It was during a certain period of time. And now they're at the point where they have over two hundred cameras. And it's shown, the, the data has shown that it's reduced bodily image, I mean, injuries. It's reduced the number of accidents. It's reduced speeding complaints, right? It's had a positive impact on that community in more ways than one. People who are killed in accidents aren't happening as frequently and the numbers are astronomical actually, which is why, uh, the state. So, and just so you know, we can't just say, oh, we want speed cameras in New York and, I mean, in Mount Vernon and start to put them up. We have to request from the state for them to make a special act for, um, the, them to allow us to have speed cameras here. But the reason that it was able to happen in New York City is because there were real results that were happening. Um, and we hope, right, that, um, I, I know we're in the process of doing complete streets. I know the planning department is working on it, some of DPW. Um, we hope to have complete streets where people don't have the opportunity to just speed through, that our kids can feel safe, that our seniors aren't running across the street because they're afraid to get knocked down by a car, right? I think this is a real issue that needs to be addressed, um, inside our community and speed bumps aren't the only answer. And we can't even put speed bumps on, um, on certain main streets that our emergency vehicles need to go on, right? Um, so I think speed cameras are an option. Red light cameras are an option that we need to consider. Um, narrowing our streets so that speeding isn't impossible is an option. Creating sidewalks where, um, you, you know, it's not as the, um, I'm drawing a blank on what it's called, but where it comes out into the street and cars are a force to slow down. Um, I think there's a better way for our streets to operate. It's a process. Um, it takes a lot of money, right? Um, so that brings me back to you, Ms. Frank. You were talking about the, a lot of money that the city gets and why it's not ha- helping taxpayers. I would argue that it is. Because if we didn't get that money from those elected officials or the federal government or the state, then that would have to go into our budget as well, right? That we would have to fund those capital projects. So, and and I'm not saying that tax, tax, rising taxes aren't a problem. I agree with you. Um we need to do a better job as a city to find revenue sources. We've been saying this for two years, at least since I've been on council. Unfortunately, it's not as easy as we want it to be, right? Um but we are in the process of identifying new revenue streams um and speed cameras can be one of them. And um there there are mechanisms, right? So that speed cameras don't just become about a business, right? It's not that if you go over twenty-five miles per hour, you get a a ticket instantly. That's not how the speed cameras work. So I think there's some misconceptions around speed cameras and what they do and how they operate. But it does affect the budget. Um it does affect how much people are spending. If we didn't have that money, like I said, it would have to go into the budget and then the increase would be a little bit larger. Um it doesn't make it easier to swallow. I agree with you. Um you should, I'm upset that it has to go up. I'm upset about past electors who put us in a situation like this. I'm upset about it all. Um but the only thing we can do right now is try to balance it now. Um if we don't, we can take tons of things out the budget, but then what that does is it affects the service you get. Um and some people say the service isn't even good enough now, right? So um that's something to consider, but I'm happy to talk about if you have some ideas on where we should be looking at. I'm happy to discuss it, right? I I haven't been able to identify anything, but I'm not the smartest person in the room. You you may be, Ms. Frank, all right? Um so you also spoke about um no, I think I covered most of it. Um Oh, so um yes, I'm gonna go to um Aisha. Thank you for presenting. I knew nothing about Mr. Melvin Sparks. Um so I am delighted to have been educated tonight to learn about his impact on not only you, right? But um so many people, musicians and people in the music industry and on music itself, right? My dad was a musician, so I love to hear the stories about um being able to carry beats from Africa, from hip hop and integrate that into a smooth system. Um so thank you for that and um so I think what Councilman uh Thompson said is true. That currently we're not in the process of renaming streets. Part of the reason is we have someone who is uh doing a study on um Mount Vernon's history, right? So it starts with African-American history. And the reason that we've halted um street naming is because we get a ton of them, right? Um and and not, and I hope I'm not being offensive, but people literally say, um you know, my cousin opened a business, he should get a, right? I mean, he should get a street name. So what we're trying to do is put together a policy on and a criteria for who actually is allowed to get streets renamed after them and then figure out some alternatives. So Councilman Thompson was talking about a plaque, right? It could be, we have a beautiful circle there. Maybe we do something that involves uh putting people who should be um uh memorialized, whose story should be memorialized at Mount Vernon around that that circle. We haven't quite figured it out. Um but I think what we should do, if at this point, if we haven't already started to um compile a list of all of the requests that we're receiving, so that when we do come up with a policy, that we can reach out and say exactly how we're going to move forward with uh the street renaming. So it's not a no, it's just a not yet. Let's figure out what we what else we can do in the process, I mean, in the meantime. And I'm losing my voice, sorry um about that. Ms. Thompson, um I gotta admit, um the buildings department has been the the bane of my term, right? Uh I talked about getting uh complaints about speeding for um at least twice a week. But I get building department complaints every day. What I can tell you is that I reached out to our D C um of uh buildings. Um and if Councilman Potte, right, because buildings department falls under um um P S E, Public Safety and Code, his committee, if he will allow me, uh she said that she would be willing to share some information and kind of get some guidance on how you could be moved forward. Um and figure out, you know, I think two years is ridiculous. And I agree with you that if that's the process that we're gonna entail, that we would never get Mount Vernon uh developed the way that this the community um envisions it. But she has responded. She said she'll talk to me tomorrow about it. Um and I can provide an update at that point if that's okay with you. Um Ms. uh Worthen. So I'm not sure if you misunderstood me at the last meeting, um but so I I said, um we I went over when I was acting mayor, shut it down, told them that they weren't able to open uh the business. As far as I know, they have been complying. If you have any evidence that they haven't been complying with uh the zoning, um you know, with their restrictions, let me know. I haven't received any evidence at all. So unless there's something that you have that shows, right? And I'm not just talking he says, she says, right? Because then we get into a battle battle of what the business owner said versus what they, what the um um uh the constituent says, right? Has someone gone in and purchased something while in being in the store from Elevate Cannabis? And if so, please provide me with that receipt so I can provide it to the buildings department. But I can tell you that every notice that I get or inkling, I forward it to the buildings department, all right? It's the buildings department and the administration's job to enforce the code. What, it's helpful for me for you for you to let me know if you believe someone is violating so that I can go and see. I don't live too far from there, right? So every time I've gone over there, I haven't seen any in-store action. But that's not to say that it's not happening. What I'm asking for, if you can provide me with evidence of them actually operating when they're not supposed to operate, because even though we're passing us uh a cannabis uh zoning to, or well, voting on it, I don't know if it's gonna pass, right? If we're voting on it tonight, that doesn't mean that they can just open. They still have to go through the permit process with the buildings department. Um we're not typically allowed to have call uh speak back, but I can speak to you on the break, right? Um and we can kind of talk about it, but I think first and foremost, we're, I'm I'm trying my hardest to work and make sure that everyone is in compliance. Right? So I'm not sure if it's, it feels as if we're not, but I'm doing my best, right? So I don't typically go out to businesses um and just investigate. That's not my role as a legislative body. But I do make sure that, or follow up with our buildings department and the necessary parties to make sure that they're doing their job. So if they're not, um any evidence you can provide that they're not would be helpful. Um, Mr. Gomez, I address most of your concerns in part, I think. No, I I get the hesitation. Um I also, another thing that I didn't mention, uh a undermanned police department. Even if we put the number of officers that we have on the street, um typically, we would never be able to catch all of the uh the speeding that takes place in Mount Vernon. And Mount Vernon is four square miles. We would never be able to catch everyone everywhere at at that time, right? Speed cameras are a way to make sure that we're utilizing resources when we don't have manpower. Um so I I think we should take note of that. I also think that um we should take a look. I'll I'll I welcome a call from you, an email, so we can walk through the New York City um study to show how it was beneficial to that community. All right, Council President, I think I took enough time. Thank you very much.
Okay, no problem. Councilman uh Boxell.
Uh good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. Um we got our dedicated citizens in the house tonight. So I always appreciate that because uh Ms. Worthen, we we don't know everything that's going on in our community, right? So I thank you for being present and being vigilant about, you know, letting us know, um keeping us up to date and everyone in here. Appreciate that. Um Ms. Mrs. Frank, you know that I I worked with Maureen for many years. I was her first deputy. So I feel your pain with the the rise in tax. I don't want to be repetitive because a lot of the the other council people, they went over a lot of this stuff. And I I do agree with, um we need to find more revenue sources, right? We we all live here, either we own or we rent and we we all feel it when our taxes go up. So that's that's definitely something we have to address. Um as far as the crosswalk, um Damani is here on the police department. We're gonna, we'll, we're gonna let them know. Uh we're gonna do a study and see where where we need to fix those crosswalks, right? Put the signs back if it need be. Um let me see, uh Mrs. Miss Sparks, that was, that was, that was moving. Um Melvin Sparks sounds like a dope individual. I'm sorry, I never met the gentleman, but uh yeah, um I I don't know the full process of renaming, but I'll be on board. He sounds really great and he did great things and I was Googling him while I was sitting here and he seemed to be an impressive man. So, you know, thanks for sharing that with us. Um Ms. Thompson. Yeah, everyone has said it, two years is a long time. I would, I would, I would like to think that our building department is is working very hard. So um I guess the question is why, you know, wh- why did it take so long? And whatever that why is, you know, if like like you suggested, if it's more building inspectors or whatever it is like that we can do and support, then we got to figure out what we can do because that's not beneficial for our city and our development and going forward. So we we got to take care of that. And I think, um, Ms. One Time, uh Danielle, she addressed the cannabis situation completely. So it it's something that I I really don't know that a bunch about. This is kind of before my my tenure. Um Mr. Gomez online, the speed cameras, that's that's kind of like a touchy situation for me because I was in the controller's office and I I was there at the implementation of the the red light cameras. And I saw the process and I saw how it ended and I put a bad taste in my mouth as far as the the most, the person who saw the most benefit was the speedlight camera company. And um it was a tax on our city and it 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 became a burden and to the point we couldn't even pay that bill because it was, they were making more money than we were collecting from the speed cameras. So I I I didn't like it. Um if there's, obviously, I have two kids, so I don't like speeding in Mount Vernon. But if that's the way, um I got to see a study, I got to see that this is gonna work before I can really support something like that again going forward. So in a way, I tend to agree with some of what Mr. Gomez was saying about that. Um my safe place for girls, folks, um I'm I'm a girl dad. I got two girls, so. Nadia Edwards, if I had that confidence in high school, I'll be going places. No, but seriously, uh I I you're moving, um I might show my girls this video, you know, like to show them. Because I I I do that often. Um Danielle Brown, when she was um president, I I showed that, like, this is what you guys can do, you know? I showed her the mayor, so we could come up there when she's in office. Now we're in your um council president, like little girls need to see our our women doing big things in our city and it's important. So I know Taj goes hard, everything she does, so I I'm glad that she's supporting this program and I want to support too. So uh thanks for inviting me to your all, your event tomorrow. I'm gonna try to come out if I can, oh, Friday? Okay, okay. All right. So yeah, let me know, let me know. And we don't have to say anything more about Debbie. Uh we we appreciate her. She does big things for the city and um yeah, Mrs. Highland, thank you again for which the work you've done with your girls there. That's all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and Councilman Potte.
Uh thank you, Council President, and uh I'll keep saying this, you could be anywhere on a late cold Wednesday night. So we're grateful that you're here and I'm grateful that you're here. Um I'll be brief because many of my councilmates uh took my thunder. I I don't want to repeat what they what they said. Uh I do want to reiterate though, Ms. Ms. Frank, the point that Councilmember uh Brown made, because it's one that comes up a lot. And it's a question that we get a lot, which is you have all these grant dollars coming in. Why isn't it a benefit to our taxes? So it's important um that we um make that plan, which is and Councilmember Brown said this, but I want to say it a second time. There's very little dollars in our operating budget for capital improvements, right? Those come from the capital dollars. Our taxes would even be higher because we would have to pay for roofs and H VAC systems and renovations of buildings if those capital dollars didn't come in. So I think that's an important point, not only for you, Ms. Frank, but for the public to understand that we're grateful for the capital dollars. We actually need them because otherwise our taxes would be higher. Um Ms. Sparks, uh I did also to Google Melvin Sparks. I'm a huge jazz fan. Uh so he does, that he does sound like a great person. Uh I was not uh born here in Mount Vernon, right? I know, no, I know, no, I know, I know, I know. And I think, you know, when you're home, you don't realize how special home is. And so not being from Mount Vernon, I realize how special Mount Vernon is. Because in these four and a half square square miles, I am amazed that a city of seventy-five thousand people can generate so many talented people. And just finding out by accident of the number of great people that have come through Mount Vernon like your dad is incredible. Um so I'm sure Councilmember Brown and Thompson and we will figure out how to memorialize him and 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 other great people here in Mount Vernon. Um Ms. Thompson, uh as Councilmember Brown said, uh my committee does take care of the Department of Buildings. Uh please take down my email address once we're done. Uh it is my personal mission to try to make the Department of Buildings better. As Councilmember Brown said, we've been struggling with this for two years. Uh our job is to help you, so I will advocate, we will advocate to make sure um that it doesn't take you two more years to to then get your permit. Thank you for coming. Um and owners shouldn't have to come to city council to get proper service from the Department of Buildings. So we're grateful that you're here, um but this shouldn't have to be the process, right? Debbie Burrell, uh Director Burrell. Uh all that I want to say is we need to get the word out more about what you do. And maybe our communications department could do a better job because we hear often that there's not enough positive stuff or anything for our kids. And I'm stunned by the level of activity that you have, not on the back of taxpayers in Mount Vernon. That's incredible, right? Not only do you have all these programs, which is hard by itself, but then you're raising money not from taxes. And so that word really needs to get out in a way, you know, ma- maybe it's News Twelve. Maybe it's Low Hub, maybe it's something else, maybe it's a YouTube, but that there has to be some way that we're getting the word out of the work that you're doing. Um but thank you for the work that you you do. Uh Ms. Worthen, uh I don't want to um spend a lot of time reiterating what my councilmate say but said, but I do want to say one thing. Um we fight enough here in council, um but I promise you that Danielle, Derek, Caitlin, Jayvon, the clerk, our court counsel and myself are always trying to figure out how to make Mount Vernon better. So I take it personal when someone says, you know what, I'm not sure what city council's up to, what they're doing. Are they trying to fight for the city? I prom- that we're spending many hours trying to figure out how to make the city better. Um if there are things that we can do even better, tell us. But I don't take kindly the insinuation, given I know how hard and how many hours that these guys and girls put in. Um I can promise you that they're doing everything that, everything that they can and then some to make the city better. Um with that being said, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Potte. Um and I'm just gonna say a few words. Ms. Frank, thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for always coming and bringing stuff that we don't get to see all the time. I do drive by uh down Columbus on a regular basis and I do see that there is a speed problem there. I'm very uh grateful that we have our D P W commissioners here, Damani Bush and Robert Hackett. And um we will make sure that um we connect you guys to you tonight so that you can have a conversation with them about what your ideas are and what was there before and what's not th- there now. Um I want to tell you that sometimes I get so excited about the really good things that are going on in Mount Vernon that I forget process and like call the boss of a department and o- only because you get so excited that you want everybody to hear. And it's really, and I, so I have to publicly apologize to you for not calling and saying, hey, can they come? But when when I hear something so great and um with the safe place for girls, how this came about tonight is because I had a situation with with um a sixteen-year-old, okay? I had just met with um Nikia Highland last week just to get an idea of what the program was. And it was so great and I happened to be on the phone with a very good friend of mine, okay, who was older in age and is basically the the guardian of a sixteen-year-old girl. And there are some issues. And the first person I thought of was to call Nikia. So to our unbelievable director, I greatly apologize for not calling you first because I just got so excited that I wanted the whole community to hear what this program is doing. Because for so many years, it was, you know, uh we we're doing for the boys, keeping the boys out of trouble. And what I was um speaking to Nikia about last night is that sometimes our girls get forgotten. But I have to say, Nadia, you are a great example of being in this program for just a few months. Okay, having the confidence to come up and speak. I I just think that's unbelievable. I, I just think that's unbelievable. You're going great places. You have mentors that you will have for the rest of your life and I just think that's unbelievable. Uh, so kudos to you and I apologize, Director. I love you. I love everything that you're doing and I love that, you know, we're doing it for free. Ayesha. I ju- I, you know, I've heard of your dad. Okay, and I, it's such a special moment to have you and your family here tonight. And I thank you so much for bringing attention to him because I think through the study that Dr. Spruul is doing is that we're going to uncover a lot. Right? We have an incredible amount of talent that has come out of Mount Vernon. So we'll, we'll talk as a council and see how we could best honor him because again, it might not be the Dick Clark, but it's somebody who, who was the foundation of all types of music. And that's something that Mount Vernon has really cultivated, like this whole music industry. We should have a music studio here, like a large, large one. But thank you so much for coming tonight. Um, as for the Buildings Department, um, I, I served as Public Safety Chair. Uh, the, one of the reasons why I, I had um, chosen uh, Councilman Potite to lead because he was working with me on processes and procedures. The one thing I will tell you is that in the last two years, we've gone leaps and bounds from where uh, the Buildings Department was. Uh, so I think that sometimes there's errors on both sides, but we'll get all the information and we'll help you through the process as much as we possibly can. Uh, the only other thing that I wanted to address was Mrs. Wordheim. Mrs. Wordheim, I think um, Councilman Potite said it perfectly. I, I got offended when you said that because this is a part-time job with full-time hours and I will guarantee you, I think Nikia, I, it was ten o'clock at night, I'm calling her and asking, asking for help. And this is a twenty-four hour day, seven day a week job that each one of us take extremely seriously. And we're, and we're not doing it for the money because believe me, there is no benefit fr- from this money whatsoever because we pour it back into the community, right? And, and so we really have a love and a passion to make sure that we collaborate and move this city forward. It's very important to all of us because all of us are taxpayers. Most of us are raising our children here and some of us own property here that we're going to have forever, like the generational wealth that um, uh, Ms. Frank was talking about. So I would just question you, you know, and, and, you know, you're, you're addressing us because we're, we're really working really hard to make sure that everything uh, goes correctly and legally here in the city of Mount Vernon. Obviously, our eyes and ears cannot be everywhere, so we appreciate when people like yourself come up and tell us what's going on because I've been down a few times since this happened, that one Saturday morning with the cannabis shop being open. And I could tell you, I've gone all different times of night and I have not seen any retail come in and out of there. They are allowed to do online sales. So you might be seeing people come and pick up stuff like a UPS, but if you have any proof of it, please, by all means. With that being said, I would like to take a five-minute break. And uh, then we're gonna uh, come back into our uh, referral session. Okay, let's go.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back. I'm Council President Caitlin Gleason. Today is January 24, 2024. We are just about to go into our referral session. So I will entertain any motions.
I would like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss legal matters.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potteet.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
I will go in for about fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, or without putting a time on it. Okay, no time.
The time is eight twenty eight P M.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I will entertain, okay, hold on a minute. Hang on for just about. Okay, I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I make a motion to exit executive sessions, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye. All right, let's get right into the tally sheet.
All right.
Let's start with LPW.
Thank you, Council President. Item number one, I have an ordinance authorizing budget line transfers to cover negative balances within the law department. That's on the agenda. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing the city council to adopt the city-owned vehicle use policy that's being held. Item number three is recreation and ordinance authorizing the cosponsorship of the Antigua and Barbuda Cultural Association ABC Food Festival, May 24th. That's being called for. Item number four, I have an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds within the office of the city clerk expense accounts. That is on the agenda. Thank you, Council President. That concludes my report.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
Number two, you're holding or is that called for?
Number two is being held.
Okay, thank you. Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the Youth Bureau and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with UDME Business for Professional Development on behalf of the youth bureau, that's on the agenda. I also have from the youth bureau and ordinance authorizing attendance at an annual, the annual Association of New York State Youth Bureau's Youth Leadership Forum, and that's also on the agenda. I don't have any add-ons. That's all I have.
Public Safety and Codes. Thank you, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Council President. I am number seven from the Department of Buildings and Ordinance, amending ordinance number thirty-two adopted by the city council on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, entitled and ordinance requesting permission to retain Neil Carnell on a term contract as outside plant examiner in the Department of Buildings is on the agenda. I'm number eight from the Department of Buildings and ordinance authorizing municipal code enforcement officials attendance at the New York Building Officials Conference, NYSBOC, is on the agenda. I'm number nine, it's for information purposes only. I'm number ten from the Fire Department and ordinance authorizing two members of service to attend the Fire and Emergency Service Instructor One Course, New York State Fire Academy from February fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-four, will be on the agenda. I am number eleven from the mayor's office and ordinance authorizing speed cameras for vehicular and pedestrian safety. Home rule request for the installation of speed enforcement cameras for the city of Mount Vernon will be on the, will be on the agenda. I'm number thirteen, public safety and ordinance authorizing the temporary closure of Roosevelt Square is called for. I'm number fourteen from public safety and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a payment agreement within Varis for clean air HVAC repairs and upgrades on behalf of the Department of Public Safety will be on the agenda. I'm number fifteen from public safety and ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the agreement with Citizens Observer Contract LLC tip four one one, renewal period from four one twenty-four to three thirty-one twenty-five will be on the agenda. I have number sixteen, public safety and ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the contract with Inter, with Interaction Insight Corporation, renewal from four one twenty-four to three thirty-one twenty-five will be on the agenda. I'm number seventeen from public safety and ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Safety to accept the one-time gift from, from Merrick and Christmas, excuse me, will be on the agenda. I'm number eighteen from the city council, a local law proposing an amendment to the code of the city of Mount Vernon to enact chapter two two four A entitled solar energy to repeal code section two six seven dash fourteen K and to amend code section two six seven dash two nine regarding the issuance of a special permit for certain types of solar energy systems will be on the agenda. And that's all that I have, Council President.
You have an add-on?
Oh, I think I do, I think I do. From council, a resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Vernon, New York, recognizing and honoring Archbishop C. Nathan Edwards will be on the agenda, and that's all that happens.
Thank you, Councilman Potite. Finance and Planning.
Sure. First one, number nineteen from the Controller's Office, an ordinance authorizing attendance for the Controller and one staff member to attend the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, conference due ninth to twelve, twenty twenty-four. That's on the agenda. IDA, an ordinance establishing land use moratorium on certain retail and storefront use types. Request to enact legislation that will restrict dispersal of certain retail and storefront use types through the completion of the comprehensive plan and possible adoption of more permanent comprehensive regulation. The request effective date to enact the legislation is February first, twenty twenty-four. That was called for. Twenty-one, planning, Department of Planning and Community Development and ordinance authorizing the extension of the service contract for African-American civil rights study with Dr. Larry Spruill for the National Park Service from October first to twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. That is on the agenda. City council, a local law to amend chapter two sixty-seven of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon and to enact article eight entitled Cannabis and amend code section two sixty-seven dash twenty regarding regulations governing the time, place, and manner of the operation of licensed adult-use cannabis retail dispensaries on site consumption sites in the city of Mount Vernon. And that is on the agenda. Planning Department Resolution to adopt a downtown vision report for the city of Mount Vernon. That's on the agenda. City council and ordinance amending ordinance number nineteen adopted by the city, by the city council on December twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, entitled an ordinance authorizing the city council to adopt and establish the Mount Vernon Economic Development Task Force. That's on the agenda. And lastly, the city council, a resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Vernon requesting that the state senate and assembly introduce and adopt legislation modifying chapter seven eight three of the laws of nineteen seventy-four concerning the offering of installment payment plans, State Senate Special Act interim proceedings. And that's on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Can we have a roll call? Oh, wait a minute, pardon me, forgive me. The IDA, I thought we held that. Is that being called for or it's being held?
Oh, I think that I missed, well, we did all.
We held it, correct? Okay, just want to make sure.
My apologies.
Note the record that is being held. And if we can go to a roll call, please.
Thank you, Council President. Roll call, Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown. It's here.
Here.
Councilman Potite.
Here and I.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Council President Gleason.
Here.
Thank you.
Let's go right into our legislative agenda. Starting with. Oh, we have to do. Yeah, okay, legislation and public works.
Thank you, Council President. Item number one, I have an ordinance authorizing budget line transfers to cover negative balances within the law department. So moved.
Well, second.
Other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council, Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Item number two, I have an ordinance author. This wasn't supposed to be on the agenda.
No.
The recreation. It was.
Yes, so it shouldn't be there, skip over it.
All right, so item number two shouldn't be on the agendas. Well, actually, I guess because it's on the agenda, we got to hold it on the floor. So we hold it on the floor and it can come back when it has the appropriate documentation. So yeah, how do we make sure that doesn't happen again? All right. Then we have an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds within the office of the city clerk expense accounts. So moved.
Second.
Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes my report, Council President. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number four, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with UDME Business for Professional Development on behalf of the youth bureau, so moved.
Second.
Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Item number five, I have an ordinance authorizing attendance at the Annual Association of New York State Youth Bureau's Youth Leadership Forum, so move.
Second.
Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye. Public Safety and Codes.
Thank you, Council President, and ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-two adopted by the city council on September thirteenth, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, entitled an ordinance requesting permission to retain Neil Carnell on a term contract as outside plant examiner in the Department of Buildings, so moved.
Second.
Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Abstention, so I realize now that the contract is in there, but I never got any indication when we spoke about it on Monday that it was going to be uploaded. I didn't get a chance to review.
Okay. Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
We have five, four ayes and one abstention. The legislation still does pass.
Thank you. Item number seven from the Department of Buildings and ordinance authorizing municipal code enforcement officials attendance at the New York Building Officials Conference, NYSBOC, so moved.
Second.
Other questions?
On the question, did we ever get the answer about, sorry, on the question, Council Press?
Yes.
Did we ever get the answer about the vehicles and them carpooling or whether they need city vehicles?
I did not.
Okay.
I did not.
I can answer that question. I'm sorry, my name is Heidi, Heidi Momak.
Go ahead, Heidi, you're being recognized.
We will need the city cars in order for us to go to White Plains from Mount Vernon.
Yeah, so does that need to be included in the legislation, Corporation Council?
We could add it on the floor, is what the Corporation Council is saying. Okay, other question, anybody else? Roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
So are we voting on adding it on the floor or are we voting on the legislation that's currently in the system?
We're voting adding it on the floor.
Okay, so I vote in favor, aye.
Okay. Oh, okay, all right. Let's pause.
Sure, I can make it. I would like to make a motion to add the recent information from deputy, from the deputy commissioner to the legislation about the vehicular use. So moved.
About the use of the city vehicle to travel to the conference.
Okay, and just DC, my Mac, sorry. Could you tell us whether or not you need reimbursement for fuel and toll? Or I guess there's no toll from here to White Plains, but is the city car going to be able to be refueled at, in Mount Vernon?
Yes, we will do that the day before.
Got you. Aye, I mean, so second, second, catching up.
Roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye, and now we'll, we will vote on.
Motion.
Make the motion.
Yeah.
For, that's item number seven.
Right. So now I'll make the motion to approve an ordinance authorizing municipal code enforcement officials attendance at the New York Building Officials Conference, so moved.
With the addition.
With the addition, thank you, Council President, with the addition.
Second.
Right, second. Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown. Councilman Potite. Councilman Thompson. Council President, please send.
From the Fire Department and ordinance authorizing two members of service to, uh, attend. The Fire and Emergency Services Instructor One Course, New York State Fire Academy from February. Fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-four, so move.
Second. Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel. Councilwoman Brown. Councilman Potite. Councilman Thompson. Council President, please send.
Item number nine from the mayor, a resolution for the authorization of speed camera legislation, so moved.
Second. Other question?
Yeah, I do have a, a comment. During the work session, I had asked. Uh, how this would be implemented. I did speak to the mayor. Um, she indicated this is about a year away from actual execution. So not that I had specifics on how, not that she had specifics on how it would be implemented. Um, but it's gonna be a year, nine months before this actually happens.
Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. So I'm trying to figure out, do we know if this resolution is what the state needs? Like, have we spoken to them to see what we would need to have in this resolution to push forward a bill? Because I know with the tax amnesty, uh, we needed to be a little bit more specific about, um, things.
Yeah, it is my understanding. We could clarify, but it's my understanding that our state reps can't move forward until we pass this legislation.
Till we pass a resolution, right?
Till we pass a resolution.
Right, but I'm trying to figure out what are the specifics that need to be in the resolution for them to pass it.
Not sure.
Law Department, do we know?
Microphone? Do we have a microphone?
No, we don't have the.
My research on this was really just to understand the process to get it to. Um, but I was not aware that we would need to research the specifics that need to be included in the resolution. But now that I am, um, I presume we would have to do that.
Okay, my, my, uh, um, bad. I thought that's what I had said on Monday. Um, okay. Okay, um, yes, I.
We spoke about it on Monday.
Yeah, I think we spoke about it on Monday and then when we spoke, when we were talking about the resolution, I thought we were talking about solar and cannabis, right? Those were, so maybe there was a misunderstanding. But my point is, I know that when things, legislation, resolutions go to the state. They typically wanna see certain things in, in the legislation and we had to go through that process for the, the tax payment plans, et cetera.
So.
I have a question. I'm sorry. So my question, um, and, uh. It, it was, i- is this time sensitive? I should have asked that on Monday, so I apologize.
That's a good question and it's something that asks the, the mayor. It isn't, it isn't. Uh, State Assembly and State Senate leave session in June. Uh, we're in January. So it might be that we have to vote on a resolution in the form that's necessary for them. In our next session, which would delay this about two weeks. Uh, but the rush is the same as the tax amnesty, uh, rates. To get it up there so that Gary and Jamal have time to do what they have to do to then get it passed.
Okay, but I, it's still, we don't know whether the language is accurate for them to even accept it. So the, my, my issue with having this move forward is that it would still end up coming back to us if they correct it, right? So we may want to do our due diligence and. Hold it on the floor to make sure that the language is correct.
If it's the pleasure of the council, I'm happy to hold it on the floor and make, and then work with Corporation Council. On that language. I would just humbly ask Corporation Council to reach out to, wherever you have to reach out to to get the right resolution to. Thank you.
Okay, I think that that's the best approach. What, what say everybody?
So then I will hold, uh, item number nine on the floor.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna hold that on the floor? Can you fall for it on the floor? Hold it, will never come back. Fall for.
Then I will. So we'll hold item number nine. Item number ten, Public Safety and Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into a Payment Agreement with Inveris for Clean Air. HVAC repairs and upgrades on behalf of the Department of Public Safety, so move.
Second. Other question?
Yes, I did speak to, uh, Commissioner Bush. He did provide me with documentation as to why this was sole source. It turns out that some of the other items in the, uh, shooting range are from Inveris. So what they said, and I just saw the letter and happy to forward it to everyone. If we mix and match systems, they won't provide a guarantee for the other systems in the shooting range.
Council member?
But I'm not sure that, um, that. Yeah, satisfies the procurement, right? I mean, it's over a threshold. I think the guidelines are clear unless they're, they are sole sourced. Then we need to bid the whole thing out completely.
It depends though, right? Because let's say there was the Acme Company that won the bid. What Inveris is saying, and I'll forward this to everyone, which is. The range is equipped with Inveris Training Solutions Targetry and Bullet Trap. Um, all software on the range is proprietary to IVTS. Uh, all the components provided have been fabricated and tested at our facility in Suwannee, Georgia. We will not guarantee any components which we do not provide will allow your equipment to function properly. So on and so forth. Uh, so we could bid it out and someone else could win. But then we would invalidate the guarantees on the other components.
Right, so what I'm saying is sole source is a specific definition in state law, right? Then we may have to bid out the whole project. Right? Because it's being, it's currently being split like the HVAC versus someone else. So we, we may have to consider bids. Has the Law Department opined on this?
So I'm confused because the letter, and I, I had an opportunity to read the letter, speaks to software, stuff of that nature. But their request is for cleaning the HVAC system, so how, uh, it, it, there's not a connection between the two in the letter. Either of the letters, so I'm unclear, so.
So my understanding, and not to sound like a broken record, and also just to add some context here, Commissioner Gibson states. Uh, which I'm sure is true. They've been looking for this for years now. Um, and he would humbly ask, you know, us not to delay this further because they've been looking for this for quite a while. But with that being said, Inveris is on record saying, if you're buying, sorry, our software and other items. And if you don't buy our HVAC, you can do that. But then, all of our software won't have a guarantee. All of the other components won't have a guarantee. Uh, we could bid out the other components, but it would then drag this out at least another four to six weeks.
So all due respect, can't, can't, no. You might need a mic. Mic, mic, mic.
What is the connection between cleaning the, making HVAC repairs? And upgrades have to do with software. I, I'm not, I'm not making that connection.
So what I would guess, and I'm guessing here, but having walked the range like some of you. There is a serious lead issue in the range. If the air is not cleaned proper, if it's not cleaned properly, that the lead could contaminate the other components that they're providing. So now you have a system where, um, it, it should be lead free. It's not because someone else is cleaning the air. And now their, their system breaks down, Inveris is saying, it's not our fault that the air wasn't properly cleaned. We all knew there was a severe lead issue in the building in the, in the space. That's impacting our, everything else in there. Software, traps, everything else. So we aren't gonna guarantee anything.
Councilman Thompson?
So what they're saying is unless they do the job in its entirety, that they're not going to have a warranty attached to it?
That's exactly.
So then we should move to another vendor, right? And you could tell Commissioner Gibson, and I take offense to him saying, uh, not dragging out this process. It's, it's called following the law, right? Um, that's the only thing that's, that's trying to happen here. I think if the law says we can use a sole source and not go out to bid, then we can do it, but this is not a sole source, right? So we should go out to bid for it. Um, and if we can't use this company, then we should find a company who can accommodate us. And guarantee parts if that's what we need.
Right, I mean, I guess we could do that. There's a couple of things that would have to be discussed, right? One is, because I'm not exactly clear if the other components are on site or if they're coming on site. When I walked the range, I didn't see it, but doesn't mean that, that it's not somewhere else in the building. I don't know that. The second piece is to figure out if there's a vendor who would do this, right? Who would say, we'll give you software, we'll give you some of the other pieces and not provide the HVAC, given the heavy lead that's in that space.
So that's what I'm saying. You don't have to separate the two jobs. Find someone who's gonna, who can do both, is what I'm saying to you.
Inveris is doing both.
No, but in, okay, so we go out to bid and find someone who can do both, is what I'm saying to you.
I would advocate for it to be voted up tonight and let's see what happens because. The frustration of Commissioner Gibson, uh, a- and his staff is palpable. Um, they've been at this for longer than a few months. They've been at this for a few years. Um, and it's something that's needed. I'm not sure.
Okay, I think I have to interrupt here for, uh, for a second. And I think what, um, you may be losing sight of. Is that if this was not followed properly because of the threshold of how much money this is. If the, if the process was not followed properly, we should not be approving this. I understand the frustration that everybody has, but the reality is this, there are processes in place to protect. Okay, and, and it's to protect the city from just handing over contracts. That could potentially not be the right thing to do, right? So that's why you have a bidding process, right? It's, it's called fair and equitable, you know, distribution of contracts. So I, I think that that's what you have. I, I understand the frustration. If I could snap my fingers and fix everything at the police department, I would do it in a heartbeat. But there are processes in place for a purpose and that's so that everything is fair and equitable. So I, that's all I have to say on it and anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Boxel.
I would, I would tend to agree with that, um. We could bid and, and we can end up with the same contractor, right? They can get who they want, but I think that to cover ourselves, um, the process, the correct process should be followed. And, um, yeah, that's, that's the right thing to do, even if it's gonna extend the time, unfortunately.
Sounds like I don't have the votes, so I'll, uh.
Well, I think, uh, let's hear from Councilman Thompson.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't think that it's gonna be delayed, um, much further. What we can do is hold it on the floor tonight. Um, have it go out to bid and it can very well be ready for, um, our meeting next month. If it's not ready for the first one, it can be ready for the second one. And, um, it can go through. They can get that bidding process done. Have it, uh, read before the Board of Estimate and, and carried out. And who knows, they may be the only one who bids on this project. So we just make sure that we, um, complete the accurate process so we don't. You know, fall into any more jams. So I don't, I don't think the project could be held up. Uh, like the council person is saying, we just wanna make sure that we're doing everything properly.
The one thing that I would state, and again, I don't have the votes, so we'll hold it, is. A bidding process is gonna be longer than a month because you have to give vendors time to respond. So you have to write the bid, which may take a month. Then you have to give time for vendors to look at the bid and respond, which takes at least a month. So now we're sixty days out. Then you have to open the bids and then judge them. So, and that at best, if everyone works efficiently, you're seventy-five days away from seeing this again.
I'm gonna, I'd like to in- interrupt. So, um, I think a really important thing to say here is how long has that? Been out of commission? It's been out of commission for many years, okay? To follow a process, you have to do it properly. And the bidding process, unless we're missing some information here, which I wish the commissioner was here. But, um, unless we're missing some, some, some information here, go ahead.
Well, what I wanted to add, so what needs to happen, the very first step to your point. Is for them to submit a spec, right? Because the first piece of legislation toward going out to bid is for the, uh, this body to approve the specs to go out to bid. So first, a referral letter needs to be written of, uh, you know, with the proposed specs. City Council entertains that and then a bid is done and goes out on the street. So I would say, yeah, it, it would take some time. It's not, I'm not even clear on what is being done.
Uh, so I'll call to hold this on the floor and moreover, uh, I'll ask Commissioner Gibson or. Commissioner Bush to come to our next work session if there's something to be clarified beyond just going out to, to bid. Okay, so item number.
Ten is being.
Ten is being held on the floor. Item number eleven and ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the agreement with Citizens Observer Contract LLC. Tip four-one-one renewal period from four-one-twenty-four to three-thirty-one-twenty-five, so move.
Second. Other question?
Councilman Boxel. Councilwoman Brown. Councilman Potite. Councilman Thompson. Council President, please send.
Item number twelve and ordinance authorizing the mayor to renew the contract with Interaction Insight Corporation renewal. From four-one-twenty-four to three-thirty-one-twenty-five, so move.
Second. Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel. Councilwoman Brown. Councilman Potite. Councilman Thompson. Council President, please send.
Item number thirteen and ordinance authorizing the, the Department of Public Safety to take a one-time gift from, um, uh, Merry Christmas. So move.
Second. Other question? It was a twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollar, uh, check to the, um, police department.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Potite, did you advocate for some more?
Next time. Although I may be hurt because we held the other legislation, but that's another conversation.
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel. Councilwoman Brown. Councilman Potite. Councilman Thompson. Council President, please send.
Item number fifteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York. Recognizing and honoring Archbishop C. Nathan Edwards, so move. I apologize, I apologize. It's late, it's late. Uh, fourteen. Item number fourteen, a resolution of the City of Mount Vernon. City Council, uh, adopting a negative declaration and local law number. Not sure, twenty twenty-four, uh, mending the city code to enact solar energy legislation, so move.
Second. Other question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel. Councilwoman Brown. Councilman Potite. Councilman Thompson. Council President, please send.
Fifteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon, New York. Recognizing and honoring Archbishop C. Nathan Edwards, so move.
Second. On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye. Okay, finance and planning.
Oh, council, I mean, Council President Gleason? Uh, just curiosity, did we ever get an update on the unified solar application from buildings?
Do we have an update?
Yeah, on Monday, I asked you to follow up with them to see if they could submit it. Do we know what happened?
I don't have an update. I can have them come to the, to the work session next.
No, no, we don't need them to come. We just need them to submit the legislation. Uh, oh, I'm not in charge, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, we have some information from Ralston, okay?
I, I spoke with Commissioner Holder today, and, uh, he was asking about the permit. So I told him that he needs to submit, uh, referral letter for that. So, um, that will be coming, I presume, in the next meeting.
Okay. All right, finance and planning.
All right, um. Mayor? Thank you. An ordinance authorizing attendance for the controller and one staff member to attend the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, conference, June ninth. Um, to the twelve, twenty-twenty-four, so moved.
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you, all ayes.
All right, number seventeen, planning department, and ordinance authorizing the extension of the service contract for African-American civil rights study. With Dr. Larry Spruill for the National Park Service from October first, twenty-twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Uh, oh, well, sorry. On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you, all ayes.
All right, uh, planning department, resolution to adopt a downtown vision report for the City of Mount Vernon, so moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, so I, I'd just like to make a statement. Um, adopting this tonight is the, uh, downtown vision report. If we all vote for it, this is the first step in the comp plan process. Uh, everyone knows we've been working with the advisory committee and consultants over the past year or so. And we've had a lot of community outreach, a lot of community, um, engagement, and we appreciate everybody's input and contributions. That's what led us to this, uh, draft vision report. We held three public hearings. We got a lot of good feedback from the community. Uh, we worked with the, uh, planning and community development to revise. And incorporate pu- uh, pub- uh, public feedback as well as our own comments. Uh, this is, uh, a guiding principles to the second phase of the comprehensive plan. And again, this is just the initial step. Nothing we're voting on tonight commits the city to decide a certain way on the comp plan or new zoning. Uh, a lot more o- opportunities in the second part for public participation. And I just hope that, um, our community comes out. Uh, and, uh, that's, that's basically it. If anybody else has a question or wants to make a comment on this, uh, vision report, by all means. If not, okay, go ahead.
Briefly, um, I'm just really very proud of the work that council has done, proud of the work their planning has done. Proud of all the citizens that came out to all the meetings we had late at night, early in the morning, and during the afternoons. Um, to, uh, get this done. So this is a step forward in making our city better, and I'm happy we're taking it. Thanks, Council President.
Okay, and, uh, one, one other item, I wanted to say a special, special thank you to the advisory committee. And, uh, planning and community development staff, they did an incredible job helping us get through this whole process. Without them, we probably couldn't have, uh, really been able to, to do this, so we greatly appreciate all the input. Okay, roll call.
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
All ayes, thank you.
Finance and planning?
No, that's sorry. A resolution of the City of Mount Vernon. City Council adopted a negative declaration and local law number dash twenty-twenty-four, mending the city code to enact cannabis legislation. So moved.
Second.
On a question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
All ayes.
All right, um, an ordinance amending ordinance number nineteen adopted by the City Council on December twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three. Entitled, an ordinance authorizing the City Council to adopt an established in Mount Vernon Economic Development Task, Task Force, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Okay, I would like to just say something, um, I think this was a great initiative by, uh, Councilwoman Brown. And even though we're a team of five, this is something very necessary for the City of Mount Vernon. Uh, as you saw tonight, we had one of our, um, elder, uh, residents come in and complain about the taxes. This will give the administration another arm to work with to help Economic Development Task Force. We will be looking for resumes, please send them into the clerk's office. This is a very important task force to have in the City of Mount Vernon. And I just wanted to, uh, thank Councilwoman Brown for all her efforts in putting this together. Because, uh, this is definitely a creative way of helping get more businesses here into the Mount Vernon. And, and to Mount Vernon and helping small businesses with, with, uh, opportunities that they might not know that they can, uh, receive. Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Not sure. It's not, aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
All ayes, thank you.
All right, City Council, a, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Vernon requesting that the State Senate and Assembly introduce it. And adopt legislation modifying chapter seven-eight-three of the laws of nineteen-seventy-four. In relation to the offering of installment payment plans, state special act, interim proceedings, so moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
All ayes, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, are there any last remarks from council? Councilman Thompson?
Yes, I'd like to, um, before we adjourn, just keep the family, the Harris family in your prayers. Um, Betty Harris passed away, uh, related to the Rogers and the Ayers family, so, uh, keep them in your prayers. And also, I forgot to state on Monday that, um, the son of Martin Luther King passed away as well, Dexter King. So keep the King family in your prayers as well, and we know so many other people are going through it, so just keep the community and friends in your prayers.
Anyone else? Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a move to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second, second.
Roll call?
Councilman Boxo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Potite?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
They might be still doing it.
Uh, we're also gonna do a moment of silence, okay? If you don't mind, we'll stand. Okay, everybody. Thank you, Mount Vernon. We are now adjourned, and our next public meeting is February fourteenth. And our working session, isn't it, right? February fourteenth, and our working session is February twelfth.